Thank you for joining us for the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting, September 18th, 2023. It is 7:00 PM. I will call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Mosup?
Here.
Trustee Pachikoff?
Here.
Trustee Watts? Here. Chair Thor.
Here. Next item?
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees Meeting, regular Board of Trustees Meeting, August 14th, 2023, Board of Trustees Audit Committee Meeting, August 14th, 2023, Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, August 14th, 2023. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved?
Support.
I'll go with the motion by trustee McDonald, support by trustee Dambrosio. Was there any corrections that we needed to make on any of the minutes? Hearing none, may I attach unanimous roll? All right, please attach your unanimous roll. And the next item?
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Mr. Chairman, I want to tell you about this. It's an interesting story. There, as you probably know, I talk about teamwork a lot and what it's like to be a good teammate. And as you probably know, one of my best teammates is Kathy Demetriou. And she, she told me recently, hey, you know, we don't have anything lined up for recognitions and acknowledgements. You know, we really enjoy having students come and make presentations here. And she said, we don't have anything. And, you know, one of the things about being a really, really good teammate is, like Kathy is to me, she helps me not mess things up and keep me out of trouble. But you have to be very, very honest with each other and, and never hide anything. And so I have to tell you, Kathy, I had to make a little fib when, when I told you, I'll work on it. And that, if you don't know me, that works pretty well because she probably thought, oh, it's just another time Russ doesn't want to answer this question. But I told her, hey, Patty Flogus is the person who puts together a lot of the recognitions and acknowledgements that we, we have before you trustees. And as you might imagine, I didn't have one lined up with a student here, and so I had to have Kathy not really know what was happening. But I, I actually was working on it, Kathy. I did have a lot of help. But for those of you that are not aware, this is the last board meeting that Kathy Demetriou will be serving this board. And it is, it's a really exciting, wonderful time for her. So I, I also know that the board feels exactly like I do, Kathy, that your service to them has been wonderful. And it is absolutely not the case we, we would have recognitions and acknowledgements and not have anything. In fact, you guys, you trustees should note, it was about three times Kathy tried to convince me. You should probably take recognitions and acknowledgements off the agenda. Take it off, you don't have anything figured out, Russ. Yeah, that's right, I'll figure something out. And she almost got a little, she does this when she's convinced I'm making a mistake. You know, I'm just going to take it off of there. And I said, no, leave it on there, I'm going to work on something, leave it on there.
You said that you might have someone from the outside that can come in and do it.
I, I did say I might have someone who would come from the, from the outside of, and I said it very specifically, I would have someone who's not an employee or a student. Who might, who might come and, so I'm going to tell just a little bit more of a story and then I'm going to, I'm going to hand the microphone over to someone else. But as you might know, it's, it's a tradition for Kathy and I to go get dinner before these board meetings. And I've been, I've been here five years and it's a nice tradition. And you also may know, I'm not a big fan of chain restaurants. I like local restaurants and family-owned restaurants, like what Kathy Demetriou's family has. If it was a little closer, that's where we'd eat. But she decided she wanted to eat at PF Chang's. And, you know, it's, it's her last board meeting and, okay, we're going to go to PF Chang's. So we had a very nice meal and she had a fortune cookie.
You are so sneaky.
And she read the fortune cookie to me and I was, I was sneaky. I grabbed the fortune after she put it on her tray and so.
You ran after the waitress to get it.
I, I did. Because the, the fortune cookie that Kathy Demetriou read after she made us go to PF Chang's said, you will be recognized and honored as a community leader. So we do have recognition and acknowledgements and I want to invite your teammates to, to come to the podium, two of them, who are going to acknowledge you.
The fortune cookie knew more than you did.
I'm going to preface this first, and I told Russ I was going to do this, because this is going to be a very formal acknowledgement of you, but I'm going to work on the informal one I'm going to share with you in private, because it will be the uncensored version of what we really think. All right, Ms. Demetriou. I was going to get the box of Kleenex ready, but trustee Watts did it for me. This is a resolution in recognition of the distinguished service of Kathy Demetriou. Whereas Kathy Demetriou has served both the Dearborn Public School System and Henry Ford College, you have to let me get through this, please, with integrity and professionalism for more than 45 years, whereas Kathy Demetriou has served for more than 10 years as this board secretary, in addition to her position as the sole executive assistant to the president of the college, and deserves this special recognition and appreciation for assuring that the board's trustees were promptly and accurately provided with all detailed documents, information, and communications related to board meetings, and that the minutes of the public meetings were accurately and timely provided to the trustees and public. Whereas Kathy Demetriou's tireless work ethic, her professional and personable demeanor, and her devotion of service to public education deserves our gratitude and commendation. Whereas during times of uncertainty with the pandemic of 2020, Kathy Demetriou's strength, wisdom, and resourcefulness contributed to the smooth operation of the college and this board's to enable us to continue to provide and meet the educational needs of our students. And whereas Kathy Demetriou's years of service to this board and the educational missions of the Dearborn Public Schools and Henry Ford College are worthy of our esteem, recognition, and gratitude, it is now therefore resolved that the members of the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees, who simultaneously serve as a Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education, individually and collectively express our deepest gratitude and sincere appreciation to Kathy Demetriou for her service, support, kindness, and professionalism over these many years, unanimously adopted this 18th of September, 2023. Congratulations.
Kathy, we have a photographer here and I, I also fibbed and didn't tell you, I asked your husband and daughter to be here. So let's, let's dry our eyes and take some photographs of this nice moment.
Oh, boy.
Why don't you come over here and to the front here, Kathy?
Come on out in front. And do not hold that in front of your face.
I won't let her do that.
All right, let's start with the whole board. Chris, and Christie, you're going to have to come up here too. I didn't say that part.
Come on, come on. Yeah, yeah, come on.
All right, let's have Chris and Christie on either side, or her with the board on each side. I want to do a picture with the three of them and me, and any trustee that wants an individual picture.
We got time because we don't have analogies.
You want me to give my bio to everyone?
Absolutely, absolutely. There you go for it. All right, Russ, stand a little straighter there. Okay, who's next?
He's actually, he's chaining her up to him.
Anybody else want to put her through more?
I do.
Oh, Cass, I feel like, um.
Somebody.
You are somebody, absolutely.
One more, yeah.
Thank you for everything, Kathy. Okay, who else, anyone else?
I'll talk to you just to make you suffer.
So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you letting me do a little bit of a non-standard recognition and acknowledgement. And one part you need to allow me is, remember, I always ask questions of the student who makes recognition and acknowledgement.
It just gets better and better.
It's like a roast.
But, but what I, you know, this board has important business to conduct and I appreciate that and I don't want to get in the way of it. But what I, I would ask, and I should have asked you this ahead of time, Mr. Chairman, but what I'd ask you for is if, if, if board members do have commentary about Kathy Demetriou's last board meeting, it might be, it might be better to do that now as we've just spent time with a unanimous resolution. And I, I told you, Kathy, you picked PF Chang's. I, I never thought the world would line us up this way. You will be recognized and honored as a community leader. So, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, I would, I would propose that we, if anyone has any public comments about Kathy Demetriou from the board, maybe now would be a time, and if, and if you indulge me in that, I would start.
That's fine.
And I want to see the minutes right after we end this meeting.
Well, Kathy, I, I hope you're surprised. And we've got a couple, at least one more event we're going to do to celebrate you, which is at the end of, of this month. For those of you in the audience who aren't aware, please do join us on the 28th. Is that right, Kathy? See, I'm not going to let you get out of your job until the, the 28th here at the 5101 at 3, 5101 Restaurant at 3:00 PM, where we'll be honoring Kathy's service to the, to the college. But I, I will just say, as, as a non-voting member of this board, I, I just want to say how grateful I am for your service to the board. I know that each one of these board members trust and respect you, and you play a really, really difficult role to be between them and the college, and it's, it's sometimes nearly impossible, but you make the impossible look possible. And one of the things that you're between is a president's office that's not easy either. And you've served me admirably. This cabinet is also a group of people who rely on you for your judgment and your precision and your wisdom. We, we are so grateful for what, what you've given to this college and this board. And I just want you to know that you'll always be my teammate and I'm glad you're with me.
Trustee Barry?
Also want to say thank you for your service to the college, and I know you served many, many years on the other side of Michigan Avenue doing public schools. So our community is very blessed to have you and so wish you the best, enjoy your family moving forward, so they deserve you now.
Trustee Watts?
I'm going to not make you cry. I'm going to try. But I was going to say, coming onto the board as a new board member is intimidating and overwhelming, and you helped me transition so well between being a mother, and you helped, especially when Thomas had that health scare last year, and you followed up. And it's hard to maintain being strong all the time, and you followed up almost daily. And to me, that was beyond just your board duty. And so for that, I will always be grateful for that because it was really difficult. But I appreciate you so much.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Kev, you know, as Irene said, being a new board member, the help that you've given me, I know that I could call you at any time and you would give me the proper information that I would need. And I was never afraid to pick up the phone and call you and ask you for help. So I wish the best in your future and hopefully we'll see you at dinner one night.
Trustee McDonald?
I just want to say, Kathy, you have been such a wonderful teammate, as Russ always says, but you've been such a great friend too. And I remember just many times sitting in your office and we laughed and, and being on the phone, and it always turned into, no matter what the issue was, you handled it, you got it taken care of, you helped me if I had questions. And then it always turned into a very positive, fun, and friendly conversation that usually had us both laughing at one point or another. So you are a tremendous woman. Thank you for everything that you've done for everyone on this board and for our community in both of the entities that you've served.
Trustee Mosup?
I'd like to echo my teammates' comments as well. As a new member and back in 2019 coming on the board, I felt you've welcomed all of us with that human touch as always. We'll forget, we'll never forget the pens in every meeting, so I'm glad that I got one today. So enjoy your time off and enjoy your family and best wishes.
Trustee Pelichkov?
Best for last. Almost. As an old board member, I think Kathy was really following me around. But I will say that it was my best advice I ever gave President Cavalluna was to make sure you stayed in his office. And since he believes everything I say, get ready for the next phase. Kathy, we'll, we'll be in touch though, I'm not worried.
Can I just say thank you to all of you? I'm so terrible at this. It's been a pleasure. You're like my family. Dearborn's been in my heart forever and it always will be, so thank you. And I love Russ.
Well, I can tell you as a board member, there are many, many times when we need information and we don't go to the person that's in charge of the entity that we are actually representing at that point. We go to their assistant because we know that's where we'll really find the information. I was going to say, I'm not crying. You've been herding cats known as board members for I don't know how long, and I know that cannot be easy because even earlier today, I'm texting you saying, are there any committee meetings? Are you sure there's no committee meetings? I thought there was a committee meeting. So thank you for all you've done. You mentioned that it's, it's been like a family, and if that's the case, we expect to still see you at least a couple times a year.
I'm happy, I'm happy. And I want to say that I love interacting with all of you. When you call me, I love it. I kind of like to talk. It's always been a pleasure to deal with you on the phone, text, whatever. It was never, to me, a, a job, it was a pleasure, pleasure.
Well, thank you for everything you've done. Anything else from you for recognition and acknowledgements?
No, thank you. I, I, I plan to never do this again. Thank you.
Well, besides what we've been going over the last several minutes, it would normally be a perfect time to forget something else that's about to happen, but there's a birthday coming up tomorrow for President Cavalluna. So happy early birthday to you. I'm sure you thought this would be a great way to forget about it and bypass it, but we're catching it.
Happy birthday, Russ.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. Are you asking me to do president's items next? Is that how we can not talk about my birthday?
Next item, please.
Kathy is inviting you to her restaurant for dinner, so.
We're closed for dinner, so that's good.
Next item is president's items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We quick, folks. And I, I, if you, if you hadn't met Kathy's husband and, and daughter, they're wonderful people who've loaned Kathy to the college for, and the district for 46 years, and they're finally calling the loan. And, and they've been, they've been good to my family and me, and I appreciate them being here tonight. A lot of this machination took a lot of pieces to move, and usually any of these things, putting a resolution together and organizing a covert acknowledgement would be something I couldn't handle on my own. But I had a lot of help and ronde de long and was, was one of those people who helped a lot. But another person who helped a lot is a woman named Patty Flogus, and I, I know many of you have met her, but I want to, I acknowledge her, but also tell you that she has accepted the position of interim executive assistant to the president's office. She'll serve in that role for the next six months at the very least while we evaluate how and if we can ever even imagine replacing Kathy Demetriou. But Kathy, Patty was instrumental helping us pull off this acknowledgement and recognition in board members. Patty, if you could stand, board members, this is who you can count on at Kathy's seat. In the next two weeks, she'll be taking over and, Chris, I've made Kathy promise that we can call her and ask her for help. I won't, I won't say she's got to come into work, I won't say she's got to do emails, but I may ask for help, and I know Patty will benefit from the help that Kathy has promised to give and will give for the next two weeks during the transition process. I also wanted to say, trustees, we, we're off to a great start of the semester. The, the first semester since the pandemic really knocked us down in enrollment, that we're back up from the previous fall, almost 2% up in credit hours, which is a great signal that I think we've hit the basement in the decline. As you know, we, we're down each semester since the pandemic hit, and aggregate, we got down a little bit more than 9%. So a 2% bump up is trending in the right direction. I'm very excited about that, and at the state of the college, we also started to acknowledge and, and note some of the things we're doing on our strategic plan, and I appreciate the chair making introductory remarks. And I also introduced Tracy Davis, our new executive director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. If, if you'd like to see that state of the college address it is on the internet, we had a little bit of audio problems there, but I think you can make out what we were saying. You certainly can make out the chair's introductory remarks, which, which were great to have, and I'm appreciative of all of you pushing us towards another great semester. I want to run through just a few things that we have coming up. It's going to be a very busy fall, and I'm excited because these events are happening on campus and them to be part of our community with. And believe it or not, that's all I'll, I'll do for the president's items. So Discover, Discover Day is Friday, September 22nd. That is from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's a really great, exciting way to, to see students who are coming to evaluate Henry Ford College as the place where they all attend. Civility Night is Wednesday, September 27th. That's with Nolan Finley and Stephen Henderson here in this building in the Forfa from 6:30 to 8:30. Really great opportunity for students and community members alike to learn how to disagree in agreeable ways and civil ways. I'm bringing back in-person hawk talks this semester. The first one will be on October 4th, and that'll be at 11 o'clock in the Student Pavilion and Dr. Rader, I should say, that's the McDonald Student Center. And on October 5th, the Detroit Public Television, Detroit Public Television Station will be putting on a Growing Michigan Together Town Hall that will involve the president of Wayne State, the mayor of Dearborn, myself, and others. That's from 8:45 AM to 10:15 AM. And the last thing I'll say is that if we're going to announce birthdays, we have to announce them all, and trustee Watts had a birthday on Saturday, so happy birthday to trustee Watts. And if there are no questions, well, I'll take any questions, and if there are none, that is my report.
Any questions for the president on any of the items he mentioned?
Are we supposed to ask him how old he's going to be?
No.
No.
Trustee Watts, happy belated birthday to you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Action items, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card by 7:10 PM to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the name of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. If during those three minutes the comments become personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, your public comment time may be interrupted or ended. We have one blue card, anonymous, they would like to come to address the board about happy 34th, 35th birthday, Russ.
And there's my answer.
I'll take 35. I'll take 35.
All right, next?
Next, action items. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they are, we will exclude these from the action items below.
I had sent an email to the board earlier this evening that we were going to pull item seven, the tuition approval policy, for additional discussion. Besides that, then we would have action items one through six. Are there any that trustees would want to have pulled or have questions on? All right, then if we could have a motion, please?
Okay, recommended action, move to approve action items numbered one through six as recommended in this agenda.
Still moved?
Support. So the motion by trustee McDonald, support by trustee Barry. On favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Next item, Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgements of Correspondence.
Trustee McDonald?
I wanted to have a discussion on action item number six, seven.
You know what, and I'm sorry, there was no original discussion items on here, so that's why we skipped over that part.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's go back then and do a discussion then on action item seven. Thank you very much.
I'll start that off too, if I may. I understand the policy, the proposed policy, and I do think that it's necessary. I like the fact that the policy, instead of just when the president realizes that there's an issue, we, you know, every two years or four years or whatever the case may be, we bring this to the board. I like it that this policy would have it come every year, at least for consideration. So I think that's important. But as I continued to think about the proposed policy, something that trustee Barry said last time in our discussion made, I thought was a good point. And it made me kind of reconsider or at least wish for a little more information. One of the things that he said was that when a policy like this is put in place, it can tend to be just perpetual. It doesn't, you know, if that's the way it's done, it continues down the road for years and years to just be that's the way it's done. And I do think it is important that the board not only get the CPI information, but also have other information to go along with that. So I called Russ this afternoon or this morning, and I kind of told him my concerns, and he said he had every intention, when the CPI information come out, to also include what the numbers would be when they're crunched, I mean, exactly what that would mean to tuition, what the, the new tuition rates would be, a comparison with other colleges, where we fall, and we've all seen that report before, and some other items. Russ, what were the other ones that you recall?
The, the, what, if this policy were to be implemented today or in a new but similar format, my intent would be to intent would be to issue the board a board report that outlines both what the Consumer Price Index for urban communities was over the last year, how that would change the subsequent falls in tuition rates, what that is in comparison to other community colleges across the state, and I think that was it.
Okay.
And anything else that the board would want.
Right. When we had that discussion, that absolutely addressed the concerns that I had. So that was exactly what I was looking for. But I just want to make sure that as we go forward, and we will eventually have a new president, we will eventually have new board members, I just want to make sure that that information is given to the board consistently every year so that they can make an inform, so they can, you know, have an informed consideration of whether or not that policy should just go ahead, as it's stated in the policy, or if they would call a vote to disrupt it for that particular year. So that's my concern, and Russ addressed it well. But I just want to make sure that there's a way, a mechanism, or a way that that information is given in perpetuity to board members, so that they can make informed decisions.
Thank you. Trustee, excuse me, Pletchkov.
I thought you forgot my name. Yeah. What my understanding is, and what Trustee Barry was concerned about, was the board's erosion of control and a default setting in place with this policy. And so what Trustee McDonald, I believe, is looking for is a trigger that would ensure that board members wouldn't forget and just default automatically over the years, as new board members and new board presidents replace us. We understand the concept behind this policy, but in the future, everybody else may not be privy to why this is in place. And we want to make sure that that trigger or alarm is elicited, and it's better to be placed in the policy, which can't be changed without board approval, as opposed to just the current board president. We understand he will honor it, but a new board president may not, if he isn't aware of it. So it needs to be codified in the policy. And there's no reason why we can't just add a little caveat at the very last, saying that after the board receives a CPI rate change, along with any notification of impact to tuition. And it doesn't need to be much to amend this, to improve it, so that we can reassure all board members that we still maintain the driver's seat when it comes to setting tuition rates, and that it doesn't fall between the cracks in future years.
Trustee Barry.
I like where this discussion is going. I mean, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, way down the road, we might have a new president. At the same time, the board changes every year. We have new board members. So I understand and respect the intent of this policy, but at the same time, we don't want to handcuff future boards and, you know, future presidents are probably thinking, what were they thinking when they put this policy? If we can, you know, hearing my colleagues here, Trustee McDonald, Trustee Pletchkov, if we can go as far as putting a sunset clause in the policy itself, when there's a change in administration, it could be revisited by the board and the new president to see what they come up with. I'm sure the market, everything will be different by then, see what direction things are going.
And it's not uncommon for Congress itself to put sunset provisions into things.
So I guess exactly what I'm trying to say is, like, we trust President Cavalluna. We know his intent is. I just was thinking way down the road. I remember Joe Guido, a former trustee, always said, Hussein, when things change, things just don't go back. And he was not wrong on many, many things that that happened. So I'm very concerned with this, where it's just automatically baked in, you know. We can sit here next year and the year after, next few years, discussing, do all the right thing. We can't guarantee that's gonna happen five years down the road. That's what I'd like to see happen. I can probably get behind this.
We would also, though, say the same thing about any of the policies. They're all done based on what's in the best interest at that time, but it changes.
Yeah, but.
I'm not saying that a sunset provision isn't something that's possible.
Yeah, you're right. You can put this into any policy, but, you know, the discussion, the national discussion is, we're trying to get the cost of education under control. And I know we all have had this discussion, but how does this look, what's perceived out there? Is that every year, this is gonna happen, no matter what type thing. At the end of the day, that's what's gonna happen. We'll see.
Any additional comment on this policy?
I have a question. So is this gonna come before us in future meetings?
Yes.
Reworded.
Okay, I'll save my comments until.
Were any of your comments advice or things that you'd want to see?
Well, I mean, I think I said enough last meeting, but just to reiterate, we have to evaluate all variables and market conditions whenever we raise tuition on our students. I do understand some of our students receive financial aid, and probably covers all of their tuition, and covers also their other expenses. But we still have a significant amount of students who pay from their pocket. And inflation is a real thing, and I don't think we just tie ourselves to one number and say, just because inflation increased, we're gonna increase tuition by that much. We have to be cognizant of the students' cost to attend the college, to be competitive with other colleges. Maybe in request for information, I'd like to know what other colleges are following, have similar policy in place where they're following the consumer index.
The consumer index, or just, do they have a policy in place, and what parameters, what mechanisms are they using?
Sure, yeah. I think that would be useful.
Give President Cavalluna a second to get things down.
Yeah, my.
So in terms of the next step with this policy, we've given a little bit of thought on some amendments that we'd like to see to it. Be ready for the policy committee then to try to complete it and have it back to us for the next board meeting, which would be a reading then, if it's gonna be any real change to it. And then November would be the vote for it. Everyone comfortable with that? Does that still give you enough time? Because we're talking about like a February timeline as to if this was implemented. Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, everyone for your feedback on that item. Now, back to acknowledgement of correspondence. I have one item that came to me. I don't know if all the trustees got this letter from Biz Fleet. Okay. It's about EV vehicles. So I'll look through it and see if it's something the college needs to respond to. I don't think there was any other correspondence that came in since the last board meeting. Next item.
Board Committee Reports.
I know we had no meetings right beforehand, so next.
Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
So Trustee Mose mentioned one item. Any additional requests for information and/or future agenda items? All right. Any additional board member commentary, other than the one topic we discussed earlier?
I have a few. One, Mr. Chairman, I, well, not I, the tireless Kathy Dimitriou put together, with the help of the Student Affairs Office, a response to a trustee's request for information on the history.
The Student Affairs Office did it all.
Okay, the Student Affairs Office did it all. And for those of you who are not aware, that's Vice President Holly Diamond, and I suspect Patty, and probably Cassandra Flucker.
Cassandra and Patty.
Yeah, Cassandra and Patty. See that? That's teamwork. Everyone pushing credit down to where it belongs. But it's before you all there in a landscape printout there. The historical, it looks like we're going back all the way into the 80s of the student clubs. I also want to thank the Student Affairs Office for hosting several trustees just before this board meeting with the unveiling and ribbon cutting of the new men's locker room in the athletic building. And it was such a wonderful, wonderful event. I didn't go look at that at all beforehand. I was surprised. And I will tell you, I'm gonna circulate to you, trustees, all of you, but certainly those of you who went into that locker room to see what it looked like before. There's before video and pictures. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Trustee Pletchkov.
I, I've been sitting here thinking, and I do have a request for information as well. At the last board meeting, I think there was an inaccurate statement made by another trustee that our tuition rates are one of the highest in the community college sector. And I know that we've been given information in the past that hasn't been representing that. If we're going to move ahead with this tuition policy, I would, can we have a very short informational piece to go along with it that actually does the comparisons of what the tuition rates are at the variety, and what our students are paying, so that there isn't that inaccurate information out there? Thank you.
Yeah, I can give that to you all.
Well, I'd like to add a public board.
That's right, okay. I'll email it to you, but I'll also have a presentation to you all at next board meeting.
Trustee McDonald.
I just want to say thank you to Cassandra and Holly for putting this information together. It looks like it was a whole lot of work, but I really think that it's gonna give us like a good history of things that have happened. And not only that, it will kind of tell us, okay, what the students were wanting at that particular time, and how their needs and their thoughts, and what they were aspiring to be, or were interested in, how that had changed through the years. So thank you so much. I appreciate this. One other, real quick. Happy birthday to the Air Force, since we were giving out happy birthdays. So I have to say that. I have a son and a father who have both served in the Air Force.
Other commentary? I just scanned through these clubs really quickly and found that we've got a dodgeball club.
I was just gonna say.
President Cavalluna, don't have them do recognition and acknowledgement. But maybe they could invite us someday. All right, if there's no other commentary, next item.
Future meeting dates. There's an addition on here. So it's gonna be Thursday, September 28, 2023, the P-12 Board of Education Policy Committee Meeting, 11 to 1:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Superintendent's Conference Room. Monday, October 9, 2023, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, October 16, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 5:30 at the Administrative Services Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, October 16, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Audit Committee Meeting, 6:30 at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. And Monday, October 16, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
And with that, we are adjourned. Everyone have a great night.